I would like to call this meeting to order of the School Board of Independent School District 624. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, present. Arcand?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Strifogi?
Here.
All right, thank you. And I would ask everyone to please stand and remove your hats and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which is various items that come to us each month, including past minutes and invoices, but also donations. And we have an incredibly long list of donations this week from our community. And we just want to express our thanks for how generous our community members are to our students and staff. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
A motion by Ms. Strifogi and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye. Arcand?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strifogi?
Aye.
The motion passes. We have a consent agenda. The next item on our agenda is public forum. There were zero requests submitted to speak. So we will move on to our informational items. C1 is student recognition. Dr. Kasmatzek.
Thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board. Join us in celebrating White Bear Lake High School students for national level academic honors. Tonight's video honors students and members of the class of 22 who represented the district as AP Scholars, National Merit semifinalists, and National College Board honorees. Well done, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Go Bears and roll the video.
All right, thank you. Congratulations to our students. Is there more? Did you just start? We'll watch it again. All right, thank you. So we'll move on to our informational item, C2, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kasmatzek.
All right. Thanks Chair Ellison, members of the board. We'll kick it off with our student liaison report.
All right. Girls tennis has their section finals today against Mounds View. Girls volleyball plays Forest Lake on Tuesday at 5:30. And this upcoming football game is the tackle cancer game, and the theme will be Pink Out. And this past Sunday was actually the first Powderpuff game. So that was pretty exciting. And go Bears!
All right. Thank you Lauren. All right, I'll jump into my report. Our Strategic Plan Action Team meetings have been going well with great conversations happening around our four updated strategies. A PIP team has been added to develop an action plan for a graduate profile for the district. This important team will work alongside the action teams to determine skills and competencies vital to White Bear graduates for post-secondary success and engagement. Thank you to those who are involved in this important process, and we look forward to seeing the updates provided to the school board in late November and December. Information about this process can be found on the district website. School meals are not free this year, which is a change from our last couple of school years. Our Nutrition Services Office is seeing a number of student accounts that currently have a negative meal balance. So it is important for families to make sure their child's meal account has funds available. This can be done through Smart School K-12 at the district's online payment page, or by depositing cash or checks into accounts before school or during lunch in the school cafeteria. It is important to note that families may qualify for free or reduced-priced school meals, but they must reapply every year at www.schooldcafe.com/isd624. If you are unsure if you qualify or would like more information, please contact nutritionservices@isd624.org. And one last Nutrition Services-related update. We enjoyed our first Minnesota Thursday last week in all of our cafeterias with local all-beef hot dogs, apples, potatoes, and carrots, and ice cream being served. A grant from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture provided financial support that allowed us to collaborate with local farmers, ranchers, and companies to make this happen. In honor of today's Indigenous Peoples' Day holiday, the White Bear Lake Area Schools' American Indian Education Program will host a Fall Feast event from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. this Wednesday, October 12th, at Willow Lane Elementary, with a feast and activities for all ages. Find a flyer for the event as a news item on the district's website. This year's fall musical, Chicago, will be performed at 7:00 p.m. on November 11th and 12th, and November 17th, 18th, and 19th. A matinee performance will also take place at 2:00 p.m. on November 12th. The matinee will have an American Sign Language interpreter and will be free for senior citizens, who should reserve tickets through their regular ticket process that will be opening soon. District community members age 65 and older are invited to apply for our Lifetime Senior Activity Pass, which allows free entry into a variety of activities for entertainment, home athletic contests, concerts, and theater productions, to name a few. If you'd like to be added to the list, call the superintendent's office at (651) 407-7563 to request a free Lifetime Senior Activity Pass. The district continues to hire for a variety of positions, offering both school day and out-of-school time hours. Full and part-time options are available. Some of our most urgent needs are in the areas of bus drivers, before-and-after-school care, and nutrition services. Check out the employment page of our district website and find ways you can join us as a Bear. And I'll end my report this evening with an extra special alumni update. As last week, a 1991 grad of White Bear Lake Area High School piloted a voyage to outer space. Josh Casada, a member of NASA SpaceX Crew Dragon Crew 5, will be in space for six months to conduct experiments at the International Space Station. Classrooms throughout the district watched the live stream of the launch and cheered on their fellow Bear. And that's what I've got tonight.
That is so cool. That is so cool. Any questions for Dr. Kasmatzek?
I have one quick question. I don't know if I should contact Bridget about this, Dr. Kasmatzek, but the local food day, how often do we anticipate that happening? Because that's tremendous.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so check with Bridget.
Tim knows. Is that a one-time thing?
Yeah, they're working on monthly, somewhat frequently, and then trying to do a month bit.
I think that full day where it was funded, so we could kind of go all out, I think that was a one-time thing. But I know Bridget works hard to bring in local products.
Throughout the year, yeah.
Throughout the year, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to informational item C1, Capital Projects Levy Presentation. Mr. Wald.
I was at South Campus when Josh Casada, the NASA astronaut, visited our high school students. And we held an assembly in the gym, and I wondered how excited kids would be about NASA astronauts. And the excitement level in that gym, it was packed. And kids just peppered him with questions as long as he would answer. It was really exciting. And now during last week's event, the theater at South Campus was full of kids. And I saw a short video of them counting down the blastoff reminded. For those of you my age or older remember in the 70s watching those countdowns and how exciting that was, I thought it was pretty neat that our kids got to enjoy that very much the same as we did. Well, thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kasmatzek. I had the opportunity tonight to present an overview of the Capital Projects Levy. In September and early October, we held three community events for people to gather to hear the presentation, ask questions. And for those who did come, we had really great conversation about the Capital Projects Levy and just a better understanding for all on school finance and how the Capital Projects Levy fits in. So we'll talk about that tonight. We'll look at understanding school finance, very briefly continued our continued capital needs, Capital Projects Levy facts, estimated tax impact, and then where you can find the complete information that we've compiled. First, looking at school finance in Minnesota is one of the most complicated school finance systems in the nation. Understanding where our resources come from is very important. So within our highly regulated state school finance system, there are three ways, or three places that we get our revenue. One is state revenue. That's the primary source of school revenue. It accounts for approximately 70% in most school districts. Federal revenue is surprisingly a very small amount. For us, it's been in that 5% to 6% range the last couple of years, but typically it's more like 3%. So that increase was because of COVID-related funding. But before that, it has been primarily special education and title dollars come from federal government. And we've been in the 2.5% to 3% range from the federal government. That's been a decreasing number for quite some time. COVID, you know, with the exception of COVID funding. And then local revenue. School districts in Minnesota also rely on local revenue in the forms of referenda, and that accounts for about 25% of our school revenue. Some people have asked, well, didn't we just vote on a levy? And we did in 2017. There are actually three times that we've asked voters to support our schools. In 2017, we did a flat renewal of our operating levy. Operating levy is our most significant annual school revenue from local taxpayers, and it is flexible in how we use it, largely used to support salaries, class sizes, classroom supplies. That levy is in place through 2027. The Building Our Future Bond Referendum was passed in 2019, and that was through intensive conversation in our community about the condition of our facilities, and is it time to invest significantly in our facilities? And our community responded yes. And we are finally able to unify our high school campus, something that's been on the to-do list for community members for decades. And we're excited that that's going to be happening very soon. And then finally, the Capital Projects Levy, which we're talking about tonight, this was originally passed in 2003, renewed in 2013, and again at a flat renewal this year for taxes payable in 2024. The Capital Projects Levy renewal will raise an amount annually of $2.6 million per year over the next decade. Funds will be used in the following ways. And we've added a couple different elements to this that haven't been there in the past, one being safety and security. And some have asked, well, didn't we approve safety and security investment in the 2019 bond referendum? And that's true, we did. There were some really high priority things that need to be accomplished. One was, we didn't have secure entrances in a couple of our secondary schools because they required construction or significant renovation to make it happen. And we're able to do that at our area learning center and at South Campus. Both now have secured entrances. All of our classrooms, all of our school sites do now. Also, we've invested and continue to invest in all of our camera systems at our school sites. And so they're not all completed yet, but that work has been ongoing over the past year and will continue. We had old camera systems, analog camera systems, that were really difficult to see faces, make out faces in this world of high-def cameras. There's an expectation by most in our community that we would have good video surveillance systems in our schools and that they would be effective. And so that investment in those cameras has been a priority for us, and the work's been ongoing. It's been really fascinating to see the improvement in surveillance systems over the last 20 years. Those surveillance systems will require ongoing maintenance. We can't allow those to become outdated. That was funding that was not included in our last Capital Projects Levy. Now it is. And so we've been frustrated over time with how do we handle those ongoing needs for school safety. School safety evolved very quickly, as we've seen. Just within a few years, things can happen very quickly. And expectations of school leaders and families and students has changed quite a bit, even over just this past spring and summer. Expectations have increased. And so we want to remain nimble so that we can pivot when expectations pivot. And perhaps schools find, here's a gap that we never really considered. When we were all going to school, multiple entrances in a school or a secure school set, a secure entrance was not something you considered. Now we do. High-def video surveillance and the software expenses of maintaining those video surveillance systems, very important. And then, you know, we replace cameras as we need to. So that's why safety and security has moved from something that we had fairly small investment in to something that we need to have an annual budget to continue to invest in that area. Technology and related services. So the referendum pays for classroom technology. In this age of, you know, digital world, it's important that our kids have access to good, reliable equipment in their classrooms. So the Chromebooks that our students utilize on a daily basis. And for some of our students, it's their only opportunity to have access to the internet and to have reliable service. And so that's been one area that we've been really proud that we've made great advances in, as well as the related software and expenses that go with maintaining that equipment. Textbooks, curriculum materials, equipment, and musical instruments. And so textbooks have become more complicated because they often have now a digital element to them. Some of them we just have replaced with digital depending on the quality of the services that are available. And so while this isn't always a backpack full of, you know, 15-pound textbooks, it's a backpack full of technology and information that our students need access to on a regular basis. But that's just the textbooks part of it. There's also curriculum Musical instruments. We maintain a large volume of musical instruments for our students to utilize. They age. We get a long time out of some of those tubas. We can get 25 years out of, but we need to maintain them. And at some point, they need replacement. And then same with instructional equipment, such as our career pathway materials. Can be expensive equipment that we want our kids to have access to, industry-grade equipment so that our career pathway program prepares them for a good career. Transportation is one area that was not included in our current levy, and we're shifting some funds in there so that transportation can be included. And we want to maintain a relevant fleet of buses and vans. There are multiple ways. We contract some of our busing, and we maintain our own fleet for busing that we do in-house. And so this would be replacing only those buses and vans that we own, not ones we contract, of course. In September, 10 fax mailing was sent to every district residence, and it identified, it's a fact-based flyer that provided information about Capital Projects Levy, so that those who have questions have a resource for that, and guided people toward our website for more information. We'll look through those 10 items. So the capital, first one, the Capital Projects Levy approved by voters in 2013 is expiring. That's true. It will expire. And that is $2.6 million in revenue annually that we would no longer have access to. Successful levy renewal will not increase current taxes. That is true. It is a flat tax rate. And so while our operating levy is based on a per-student dollar amount, the Capital Projects Levy is based on a percentage, 2.208% of the net tax capacity of the school district. And I want to be clear, that's not 2.208% of the value of someone's home. It's a much more complicated calculation, and it considers all the commercial, residential, and rental properties within the school district. Third, several options were considered before deciding on the renewal request. Of course, the school board, you had options to increase the levy, let the levy expire, or maintain it at its current rate. And given that these are challenging economic times for many in our community, the decision was made to just renew at the current rate and see no increase. Failure to renew the levy will result in $2.6 million gap in revenue. And much of that is related to things that we would just be kicking the can down the road and create a more significant issue for ourselves, where we're going to need to, at some point, invest in buses, security, classroom technology and equipment, musical instruments. And so by renewing and maintaining this, we can continue to stay in a good place in renewing on schedule. Successful levy will help meet ongoing and increasing needs. We've talked about safety and security and all of those things. So yes, those that continue to be ongoing needs for the school district, those needs are not going to go away. Kids of tomorrow are not going to need less resources than kids of yesterday. So we need to be planning for our students and making sure we have the equipment available. We are not alone. All Minnesota school districts depend on local support to maintain quality educational programs for students and meet these not met by state or federal funding. That's the expectation at all levels, the state, at the state level, that local revenue pick up where the state revenue does not. And so we're in the same position as many school districts. In fact, we're taxed at a lower rate than some. The district has kept its promises. Yes, since the renewal in 2013, we have invested those funds exactly where we said we will. We maintain, we watch those funds very closely. We make sure we spend it only on approved areas that the voters approved in 2013. White Bear continues to be a good steward of the community's investment. We've received excellence in financial reporting from both the Association of School Business Officials and Government Finance Officers Association for 21 consecutive years. I'm not sure if there's any school district in Minnesota who's maintained that level over those 21 years. I suspect not, but it's a recognition level that we're very proud of in our school district.
You're correct, Mr. Wald. There is not.
There is not, okay. The district's fiscal credibility is high. So we recently conducted a professionally-done survey. 89% of respondents in our community believe that they receive good value from their investment in their school district. 80% believe we have spent referendum revenue responsibly. And then residents rated the district's financial management well above the industry norm, putting us in the top quarter of suburban school districts. And then finally, we know on the bottom that we've took advantage of low interest rates when we could and refinanced outstanding debt, saving $500,000 to taxpayers through our annual levy over the next two years. And the benefit to our students is significantly, is significant. We monitor safety and security within our district, something that I think we're really proud of, the work that we've done in that area. Kevin Klecker is our Safety and Emergency Supervisor. He keeps us on our toes. He asks all the right questions to make sure that White Bear Lake's in a good position. 89% of respondents in the survey I just referenced rated the importance of technology to student learning as very important or absolutely essential. We know that updated curriculum is critical, and we continue to improve in that area. We're proud of the seven career pathways that we have in the school district. We've continued to invest in those, and we recognize that this isn't the day when students would drop out of school and there'd be a job waiting for them that would offer them benefits and a good, you know, good career they could support a family. And kids need access to, they need preparation for a career that will get them certifications. They need opportunities for post-secondary education so they can access those positions. And then our music and fine arts programs are live and well in White Bear Lake. We just heard about the upcoming theater production. If you, community members haven't seen a White Bear Lake musical production, they're missing out. We're among the best in the state, and our students in our musicals are always recognized at the highest level, something we're very proud of. And you see that our bands, choirs, orchestra, phenomenal too, and continue to get recognized at a high level. So those are the three community meetings we had for community members to learn more. We hope that others listen to tonight's presentation. If you found this really fascinating, it's recorded and on our district website. You can listen to it there. And we encourage you to look on the district website for Capital Projects Levy information. One common misperception we'll address is some people have said, well, districts are flush in cash. There was just all the COVID money and ESAR money, and school districts are swimming in cash. It's important to understand a couple of things, that that money was clearly earmarked where it could go. It's highly regulated money. It's not funds that districts just use for ongoing expenses. We have, we had very specific health and safety requirements that needed to be met, and we were able to use those funds. And we've been this past summer and continue to invest in funds to address learning loss and increase our opportunities for student intervention in our schools. And so we're super thankful for those funds. We're using those responsibly. But those are not long-term funds for us. They're helping us meet pandemic-related learning loss over the next couple of years. It's always important and helpful, I think, to people to see, well, how does our school district levies compare to other school districts? And so this chart shows nine school districts, most of which are near us and/or our district we compare ourselves to because they're similar size to White Bear Lake. And these are all in the metropolitan area. And you can see this chart shows operating referendum, that's our operating levy in orange, and our Capital Projects levy in blue. White Bear is third from the end. Some school districts have only one of those, but they have it at a much higher amount. And so when you compare White Bear Lake, and you can see Mounds View and Roseville, those two levies account for significantly more than what we levy of our taxpayers in White Bear Lake. And you can go all the way up to Stillwater and Burnsville and see that their levy dollars, when put on a per-student basis, significantly higher than White Bear Lake's. levy dollars, when put on a per-student basis, significantly higher than White Bear Lake's. And the fact that this is a flat renewal means that if our taxpayers vote yes to renew this, we're not going to jump ahead of those school districts in that amount. It's going to stay where it is because this is a flat renewal, not an increase. We're just asking to keep us at that level. When we put the estimated tax impact against the average home value in White Bear Lake, that amount is $350,000, and it's a $77 impact on a $350,000 home. So all the taxes that you pay annually, $77, would go toward the cap, well, currently are going to the Capitol Projects levy and would continue to go to the Capitol Projects levy. And then that changes based on value of the home and as well as whether it's commercial and industrial, apartment, and non, and non-homestead. Again, for complete information, if you go to our website and hit the About button, you'll find the Capitol Projects levy information. It's also in the middle of the page, there's a button, and if you scroll down to the bottom, you'll see a button, and then all the way to the bottom, there's a fourth button, so, a fifth button. So it's hard to miss. Or, and when you get to that page, this is what you'll find, quite a bit of information, including, like I said, the recorded version of this presentation, and tax impact materials, and the 10 fax mailing is on there as well. That is all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wald. Any questions for Mr. Wald? Dr. Neumaster.
Encouraging to see all of the good things that we've, we've done and that we're doing, and I'm just looking at the wording, and I guess I want to know for sure, does technology, textbooks, curriculum material, equipment, et cetera, include fully equipping our marvelous new Learning Commons? You know, we're not saying media center or Learning Commons, but they're awesome spaces where kids will create, do things, perform, research. So I would hope that they're included in, if they're included in the general curriculum materials, because they're the hub of learning, but just putting that term in there to make sure. I know we get federal and state money, but as is for everything, it's small.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be, if it were learning materials, it would be in there. If it were furniture in there, it wouldn't.
No, it's, I'm talking about whatever kind of format you have to provide information, activities, I mean, it could be a 3D printer, who knows, in a maker space in your Learning Commons.
Yes, it could be that. Yeah, so, yeah.
And so historically, the, the funds have supported the media centers too, Marge, and that, that won't change, along with operating, you know, other, other pots of money too, operating capital, for example, also supports the media centers.
Because they're awesome, the rebuilt ones.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Strife, O.G., and then Ms. Daniels.
I just had a question on the camera upgrades. Having been on the other side trying to decipher what's on there, I'm excited to hear about this, and how are we on the rollout of that? How many, I mean, do you have any idea where we are with that?
Well, like, on our elementary schools, because we're, most of our work is done in the elementary schools, we're near complete, near 100% complete. So the high school project, you know, has quite a bit of work to do. Central has been updated, but we'll have additional updates once the, once the investment occurs at Central. District Center as well has had some updates. So yeah, I think, I would say if we put it all together, I'd say we're at about 75% complete.
They're running along the same lines as the facilities updates?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, yep, yep. As we update buildings, we update security cameras.
Ms. Daniels.
For the safety and security portion of the levy, would that include any SROs? Is that a different, because it's not for staff, right? It's just for equipment and?
Well, you could use it for related staff, but we don't pay for our SROs out of that. We don't intend to.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Technology staff only, I believe.
Yeah, that's right.
But not other types of staff. This particular, the Capitol Project amount is, you can use it to support technology, so to the extent your technology staff might be supporting systems that are safety and security-related, yes, but SROs, no. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Arcand.
I just had a question about the levies coming forward. I know there's been some discussion in the, in the community that even though it's a flat fee, that the school district will be getting more funding because the county is going to be raising the appraisal value of the property, so we'll receive more money. Exactly, you know, where do we stand on that? Is that really true, or is that just speculation? What do we know?
Well, that could be true. Per parcel, it, it could affect one parcel and not another, but really, it's the net tax capacity of the entire school district. So if the, if the entire net tax capacity for a school district rises, that dollar amount will rise, and that kind of allows it to adjust with inflation, because our buying power for any of these things are going to decrease. Three years ago, a school bus cost about $105,000, now it's $125,000. So as those things increase, and the next net tax capacity increases, we'll see some, we'll, we'll see that number go up. If the net tax capacity, if we're at a bubble, and that bubble pops, and the net tax capacity of the district decreases, we would see a decrease in revenue on the Capitol Projects levy as well.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So, Mr. Wald, if this doesn't pass, then that is, as you said, it would be a $2.6 million loss in funding for us. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, and then I'm looking at the, the property, the taxes on the, the chart that you had up there, and as a flat renewal, it's an annual, yeah, there we go. So that's an annual number, $77 annually for a family that owns a $350,000 house, right? So if it doesn't pass, that family would get their $77 back, but the district would ultimately lose $2.6 million collectively.
That's true. The, yeah, the homeowner would save about $6.40 a month, yep, and, and the loss of revenue to the district would be $2.6 million. And for those things that are capital-related specifically, so we'd have some difficult decisions to make related to technology, because that's the majority of where the resources go.
And that was one of the, the first things that I learned when I started on the board is how complicated school district finance is, and that B, bond, is for buildings, as I remember that, and then L, levy, is for learning. And so this levy directly impacts our students' experience in the classroom, right? I mean, there's no way that my family could afford to buy Chromebooks for my kids, you know, there's no way. And so the, the fact that the district has been able to do a one-to-one has been tremendously helpful. The fact that our fifth graders can now take orchestra, and it's booming, that's something that would be impacted by this. And then, of course, safety and security, we all know the world that we're living in, and that these things are expensive. If anybody's ever put cameras on their own homes, you know that it's expensive, and here we have multiple buildings. So I guess what I'm just trying to say, I don't have a question, more of a comment, is that this is money that directly impacts our students' experiences in learning, and it's a not, it's a zero-dollar increase, and it, I really appreciate the way that you've broken it down, because it can be so complicated, and so I think that this is really helpful, especially as our community thinks about those particular things. Technology, what is it, technology tubas, textbooks, and safety, right? Like, that's how I remember it, I need the reminder. So this is all just to say, I really appreciate how complicated this is, and that you've really laid it out, why this is important.
I want to clarify a couple of things, back to Kathleen's question. So the SROs, we, you know, we, we have that relationship, and that's not going away. We fund that through a different source, so that isn't, that isn't in question, but that's just not, that's just not part of the funding stream. Also, Tim and I, after the incident in, in Texas, the unfortunate incident in Texas, Uvalde, we met with our, our police department and talked about ways to make improvements in our buildings, and so it just speaks to the relationship we have with our police, with our first responders, and that, you know, we've made some commitments, that we're going to do some things to make our buildings even more safe, so that's sort of, but, but that's more investing in, in structures or capital versus, versus personnel. And then it's more accurate to say that the tax rate isn't increasing, because over time, the, in all likelihood, the 2.6 million would grow, you know, annually, it would grow over time, but the tax rate is remaining the same. So we happen to be in a school district where the net tax capacity is growing, which is a very good thing, obviously, and so then that annual revenue would increase year, year to year. So, so it's more, generally, it's more accurate to say that the tax rate is remaining the same. So individual folks might see a change, they, they could see a slight increase, they could see a slight decrease, so.
Oh, one more thought I just had, that as we were thinking about textbooks, the Minnesota Department of Education revises the state, the state standards on a 10-year cycle. So math, well, math, I think, was just revised, science was revised, English Language Arts is revised, social studies is coming, and that's every 10 years, which means that we are on a constant cycle of updating our curriculum and our textbooks to meet those revised standards, right? And so that's something that we have to consider, that it's not just once every 10 years, it's, oh, math, oh, science, oh, English Language Arts. So, and textbooks can be, whether it's online or a physical book, can be really expensive.
Yep, yep, and we can't, we can't choose to not update our curriculum to meet the state standards.
Right.
Definitely.
Right, right, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Ms. Thompson.
I don't have a question, just a comment. So at $6.28 a month, roughly, which is about a coffee at Starbucks, which I do probably more than I should, but I am more than happy to put that $6 to my child's educational needs, so, thank you for the presentation. I think it's well done, you always do a good job with that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wald. All right, we will move on to our only discussion item, D1, first reading of school board policies. I'm going to read the, the list of numbers for, just for the public understanding. The school board policies come to us for a first reading, and then will come back to us a month later for a second reading, at which time we will pass them. The policies are seen by a policy committee and are developed by various members of the cabinet. So tonight, we have for a first reading, 301, 302, 303, 304, 305, 306, 422, 423, 520, 522, and 523. So I ask if any school board members have any comments or questions, please direct us to the correct page where we can all look at the policies. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. These will come back to us, it looks like, for a second reading in November. And then we'll move on to our operational items, operational item E1, action on bids for the high school interior room signage. And this is again, Mr. Wald.
Yes, thank you. So the high school project was originally built, bid out in May of 2021, the work's been progressing. There were some items where design, the design process hadn't been completed enough to bid it, and so those are usually some of those smaller projects that come along later in the project, such as interior room signage. We were spending a lot of time figuring out where outlets and light switches would go, and so once we got it going, then we shifted our energy to things like interior room signage, and so we're bringing that to you tonight. So you'll, in the board materials tonight, you'll find the recommendation letter and the bid tab sheet for the high school interior room signage. Bids were opened October 4th, 2022. After reviewing the bids, our construction manager, Kross Anderson, it's recommended that we award the bid to the lower, lowest bidder, Fourth Dimension Signs, with a bid of $144,397. The other bid for the project was $168,949. So the recommended action is that the board accept the overall bid for the high school interior room signage as presented to Fourth Dimension Signs in the amount of $144,397.
You've heard the recommended action, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Strife, O.G., and a second, a second by Ms. Daniels. Any discussion or questions?
I have a question.
Dr. Arcand.
I'm just curious, do we, we have a budget for this, and did it come in or over or under?
Yeah, thanks for asking that question. This was all included in the budget. This, this came in under budget from where, you know, they have adjusted budgets throughout the, throughout the process toward what they think is going to get bid at, and so in this case, we're, we came in, it's really pretty significantly lower than where they thought we would be. And they based that based on our first bids on interior signage across the district, and this came in pretty well.
Dr. Neumaster.
I just have a question, and I'm sure they've thought of it, because they've thought of everything always, but if this is interior signage, which makes you think of print, I'm assuming they're looking at all ways of telling people, whether it's a blinking light, or braille, or whatever, is included?
Yeah, all of those ADA requirements are included in the signage, yep.
All right, seeing no further questions or comments, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Neumaster?
Aye.
Strife, O.G.?
Aye.
And passes, thank you, Mr. Wald. And we will move on to our final operational item, E2, policy, it's the second reading of Policy 506, the district, I'm sorry, moving back and forth between documents here, the School Board Policy 506, Student Discipline. This came to us last month for a first reading, and now it's a second reading, so I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand, and a second.
Second.
Oh, oh, second by Ms. Thompson. Any questions or comments for the vote? All right, seeing none. All in favor of approving School Board Policy 506, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. And now we come to our final item of our agenda, Board Forum. This is an opportunity for board members to share what's going on in the community and other intersections that we might have with what's going on in our buildings. Anyone have anything for Board Forum? Ms. Strife, O.G.
Well, I have a few things that I just wanted to call out and acknowledge. I visited Lincoln and presented to fifth graders in Janet Dickinson's class on the power of collaboration and working together to, to make decisions and to create a community that is conducive to learning in the classroom. I also attended Lincoln's PTO meeting, and there was a good group of parents there ready to support the students for the year, and it felt like a nice start to the school year for that school. I visited North Campus and learned a bit about what was happening there from the principal, Nelson, and I learned a little bit about the admin swaps, which I didn't know about, and where the administrators are swapping schools as they get together, as they move closer towards bringing the campuses together, which I thought was very cool, and good for the students to get to know the administrators as we move closer to that time. I learned about student involvement in their, in the leadership team. She shared a video with students and staff talking about the racial harm protocol and establishing norms, and some information on the non-negotiables. That was very powerful to see student voice in that way. And I also attended the racial harm protocol a couple of weeks ago, where, I'm just going to call out that Dr. Gillespie was there presenting to six Minnesota school districts on, she was invited to speak there as a champion for the racial harm protocol, to teach others' districts on what we're doing, and being held as a role model, along with another school district, and how this work is rolling out. So thank you for that work, it's powerful.
Thank you. Others? Ms. Thompson.
So I have a couple of things just for the APAC group, which is our American Indian Parent Advisory Council, starting on Parent Advisory Council. Starting on Tuesdays, we will have, they will offer Dakota language lessons, and it's open to everyone in the district from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., October through April, and it'll follow the district calendar. So if there's like a day off of school, it would not, it would not take place. They will also offer Ojibwa language lessons weekly on Thursdays, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Will also follow the district calendar and go October through April. This coming Wednesday, it was in the presentation tonight, there will be a fall feast drum blessing, and they will also have a meeting table at Willow Elementary from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., and food will be served from 6:00 to 6:30. And then the APAC group has asked to have some communication. They meet on the third Wednesday of every month from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., and they had been doing it virtually just due to COVID and everything, but now they are going to be switching to a hybrid model. So they will, this next coming one this month will be held here at the district center in this room, and they will provide food and childcare as a way of hoping to get some more engagement in the APAC. So just a quick little letter that was put out by Bas Wehwe, who is our American Indian Educational Program specialist, that, let's see here. Our APAC is in need of current and new participation via an advisory committee. I kindly request and urge you to participate. The APAC meets on the third Wednesday of each month from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., and our meetings will now be offered in a hybrid model to assist APAC members with busy schedules. Attendance, whether in person or at the district boardroom 112, refreshments available and kids welcome, or via Google Meet video, voice, or chat only are acceptable ways to attend. Additionally, please know that we are flexible and understand you may have to multitask while in attendance, for example, physically at an extracurricular event, while voice or chat only attending in the APAC meeting. For the APAC calendar invite or for more information on the American Indian Educational Program and the APAC, please contact me. And you may also find meeting information on the district webpage
Thank you. Anything else? Dr. Neumaster?
Well, I want to have hats off to the PTOs that got going gangbusters last month. And I attend the ECFE and the Otter PTO. The Otter PTO that I met with, we had a good look at the inside of Otter's remodeling, which is still continuing. It was pretty impressive. And they also do all of their meetings. This is a holdover from COVID, but it's been really nice to keep people coming. They use a hybrid meeting, and people are maybe home with a sick child or multi, doing multi-activities at the same time, but they get an amazing number of people. So I will say that's one good outcome from learn, from almost all of us learning to do things in a hybrid way, so it's handy. You can be out of town on a vacation and still attend. So real good attendance, an amazing number of things lined up for both ECFE and Otter, as always. I also was at Lincoln for the collaborative event with the fifth graders, and that's always interesting to see how the fifth graders' minds are working and their take on it. And it was also interesting from somebody who spent a lot of time in classrooms to see fifth graders on chairs that wobbled and rocked and were tall and short. And I think they got rid of some of their fidgets just with the nice new furniture. So that was an interesting look, because I'd heard about it, but I hadn't seen it with a room full of 30-plus fifth graders. And last but not least, I want to put a shout out for the senior advisory group. I belong to that committee, and they're involved actively with the senior program, the senior adult program. And they're looking forward to the new location that's going to combine all kinds of groups at the current sunrise. But they're looking for input from people. They designed a survey with the support of John Anderson and Michelle Hubbard and the, the crew in senior programming. And they're really trying to look at needs and interests, and they're looking for more input. So that, the beta version of that went out at Market Fest in different places this summer, and you can get your own copy of it sent to you online. And so if you know someone that's active in the adult program, or the senior program, or would like some input, they'd like to hear from you. So we're thinking ahead, but I think that is a good way to do it. And it's also a totally hybrid program. At least 50% of the people attend on Zoom. So.
Anyone else?
Something?
Dr. Arcand?
I, I know that at one of the last meetings, we talked about some of us had an opportunity to, for, spend five weeks with some Ukrainian students, student leaders, as they were learning their leadership. And Dennis was with me, and we had, I had an online discussion with him. And it made me appreciate what we have here, because as he's trying to figure out his algebra, he's hearing the rockets and the bombs go off in Kyiv, which he's about 30 kilometers southeast of Kyiv. And so when our kids are trying to figure out their math, they don't have that going on, and he's surviving and doing that, and letting him know that his father is on the front line. And so he actually is at home alone, trying to go to school, finishing his senior year and dealing with it. So I just wanted to remind people to keep, these are, the Ukrainian people and your thoughts and prayers, that just know that we've had some of those students, and they're in harm's way as we speak.
Just a couple of, of things I wanted to share out, some gratitude. First of all, it's Indigenous Peoples' Day, so gratitude for the learning and the meeting that we're doing on Metawakaton Dakota Land. I want to thank everybody involved in homecoming, especially the people who worked so fast to fix the lights during the football game. If anybody was there, I know that, I'm sure there was a lot of panicked people, but it was fixed, and it was fun, and it was great. I want to thank everyone who's involved in the task force committees. That's a, it's a big commitment, working on the strategic task force plans. I know that there's several board members involved on the committees, and I just want to thank our community for really stepping up. We really value your feedback and your perspective. It's a big district, and we need to have people with, with different perspectives. And so it's been really great to see. And then I also want to shout out to the world language programs here. We have some French foreign exchange students staying in our house right now. And I know that there's also the German foreign exchange students are also in town to enjoy Minnesota. And that's a lot of work for the world language programs to make those things happen. And what a great experience for those kids. So just thank you to all of the work that the world language folks do. So. All right. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move for an adjournment.
Motion by Dr. Arcand, and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Neumaster. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And we are adjourned.
Thank you.